Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in justice for all.
Are there any reports of committee? Counselor Williams.
Mr. President, this evening I attended a panel of the 17th meeting and I was joined by Tom for Edwards at that meeting. I call this meeting to discuss the consolidation plan for the senior centers, in essence of the Ray Jordan Center opening either late December or early January. Unbeknownst to me, there actually had been a protest by some of our seniors on City Hall steps in reaction to the Mason Wright Senior Center closing and effort to be proactive. I scheduled that meeting alongside some of my colleagues to make sure that we heard their concerns and made a plan or started thinking about a plan to alleviate that from happening again. So, the result of that meeting was that Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, she did describe that a communication plan needs to be put in place to make sure that seniors are actually getting the information that's disseminated from the city. We also talked about the transportation service, in essence of the new senior center opening as well. So, we will meet within the next few weeks to make sure that seniors are invited to these meetings as well as attending so that they can continue to express their concerns about the PBTA as well as about the senior center closings as well.
All in favor of accepting the report say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Mr. President. As has been discussed, we met this afternoon, Counselor Hurst and I met with Attorney Pacula, Attorney Davis, and Commissioner Barberi, and actually Ms. Beggs and Ms. Downey did a nice summary of what we talked about. We looked at businesses that are open after 11:00, between those hours of 11:00 in the morning, particularly the ones that we're seeing a lot of police activity at. We're kind of looking at that Detroit project, that Project Greenlight, and kind of mimicking some of the successes that they've had in terms of mandating lighting and cameras and all that needs to be worked out. It's certainly at the preliminary stages, but we're hoping to get cooperation with businesses. Some of the stats are pretty impressive when they are improved. The businesses that did participate improved 50% in cutting down in crime and also 25% increase in revenue when they took part in this project. So, again, we've got some work to do to fine tune it before we bring it to the council, but I think it's going to be a very worthwhile effort. So, again, I'll keep everyone up to speed. Secondly, Mr. President, I just wanted to thank all the ward counselors for setting up the meetings that we've been having in the Police Relations Committee. We only have one ward left, Ward 6, because we had to reschedule that meeting because of some conflicts, but I'd like to, if we could, get that meeting scheduled quickly. I'd like to make a report available to the council and to the mayor and to the police commissioner sometime over the next few weeks. That group has done some really good work across the city and I think we're going to have some substantive suggestions as it relates to police and community relations. So, again, thank you all for your activity and we'll report back soon.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting the report say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Madison Development Committee met through this evening to discuss the Andover Road discontinuance. I was joined by Counselor Allen and Council President Ramos, the city solicitor, representatives from DPW and the petitioners. The city solicitor has, and I think all of us have it, have just given us an outline of the conditions that are necessary for the discontinuance. And at the meeting, it was stated that the Board of Public Works approved this, that the abutters approve it, and there are certain things that have to be done in order for this to happen, including new house numbers and MyLars, which are outlined here in our letter from the city solicitor who I'm not sure if he's here. Is our attorney familiar with the conditions? I don't know if she'd like to speak on the conditions. Are you familiar?
I would just grab it out, I think it could be okay with conditions. And the city solicitor will be speaking once again.
Okay, all right. This is agenda item number three. It was referred to committee because we were waiting for an opinion from the Law Department, which we have received, but this has received favorable request from the abutters, anybody impacted by it, and the Board of Public Works, and we were not able to take a vote because there wasn't a quorum, but I would like to make a favorable recommendation that the city council approves this because all the people that are involved are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of accepting the report say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Any other reports of committee? Seeing none. Item number two, Mr. Clerk.
Item number two is the June revenues versus expenditures report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight you have the June revenue and expenditure report. This is the year-end results. They are unaudited at this point. This report has not been reviewed by the Finance Committee and I'm going to defer to the Finance Committee Chair, Tim Allen.
Yeah, thanks. So, I talked to Pat last week about this. This is the year-end report. This isn't another monthly report. This is the year-end report from July of '16 to June of '17. So, normally, we might ask Pat a question or two and then we do a kind of a tacit approval typically of what he has turned in to us. In this particular case, I think since it's the year-end report, Pat and I talked last week for a while about doing a, not a deeper analysis, but including some more comparison data of past years and this year, et cetera. So, we talked about putting this in committee because the Finance Committee, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I think it would be a good idea, we didn't do this last year, but it would be a good idea if we did it this year, I think, to just review how did this year look compared to other years, et cetera. As you can see on here, the numbers are good. It's 5.7 million of excess, am I right, Pat?
Yes.
So, the numbers are good and we're in the same range of surplus, if you will, I don't know if that's the right word to use, that we underspent our '17 budget, but respectfully, I asked everybody to look at it, but I would like to make a move to put this in committee so we can, I've asked Pat to produce a couple other reports to compare this with previous years, et cetera, and I think it would just make sense since it's a yearly report. We know the budget will be challenging. If nothing else, we know the pension liability payment next year will be going on $5 million. So, there's other work we need to go on the pension liability, but I think it's a good time to put it in committee, do a meeting or two outside of here and bring it back to committee with a more thorough report for the end of 2017. So, I'm making a motion to put it in committee.
Motion made by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Fenton. All in favor of sending the report to the committee, say, this will go to the Finance Committee. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number three, Mr. Clerk.
Item number three is a petition relative to the discontinuance of Andover Road.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes, I believe the city solicitor is going to speak on the conditions, and one of the questions that people had was whether or not the abutters had been notified, and all the abutters have been notified with a return receipt, and I know that was a concern, but that objective has been met. I just saw the solicitor, there he is, yeah.
Is this the petition on Andover Road?
This is Andover Road.
Oh, okay. So, the counsel, Edward Pacula, city solicitor. This is the petition filed by at least six residents to discontinue a portion of a private way known as Andover Road that goes between Methuen Street and Glenwood Street. The petition has been reviewed by the Planning Department, DPW. They have approved it. There was a hearing by the Board of Public Works. There was a notice to all of the abutters. I think there's six abutters altogether. There was a little meeting before this where the petitioner and one of the abutters showed up and talked about this. I think there was another abutter who was offered a ride to come down. The report was that she didn't have any problem with it and she didn't need to attend, but the Law Department has reviewed this and we don't have any issues with it. The key thing is to make sure that everyone's still going to have access, frontage on a public way, and that's clear, that that's going to happen, that's not going to interfere with anyone's access to their property. And we put in some conditions. Normally, these are filed with what's called a Mylar plans for recording. Those haven't been done yet, so this won't be effective until we get those plans and they get recorded. In addition, we'll need what's called an A and R, Approval Not Required Plan, that'll show the new lot lines, and one of the houses on this private way is on fronts on Andover Road, 16 Andover Road, and that's not going to exist anymore. So, they'll submit an application for a new house number because it'll front on Glenwood. They'll submit an application for curb cuts. Currently, they access the property off of Andover, so that portion will just become a long driveway to the property, and that'll be shown on the A and R plan. And that will basically touch all the bases of what we need to do to discontinue here. And I think that the petitioners here can speak as to the pros, and I don't know that there's anyone here in opposition, but that in summary is what you're doing. I've submitted to you a draft order that has exhibits, which include the petition, includes the record from the Board of Public Works hearing. There's also a condition in there from Water and Sewer Commission because there's a water line that goes through, and this is conditioned upon reserving them access to that water line that goes through the property, so nothing could ever be built over that water line. Happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor, for your diligence on this. Obviously, this is important to the neighbors up there. Does that condition mean that the Water and Sewer Department will have an easement for its benefit when this is all said and done?
Effectively, yes.
And what will happen with respect to property lines, given that we've got three parcels here that abut Andover?
Essentially, at the middle of the road, it would be divided and it would revert back to the owners who abut, so their lots will be a little bit bigger.
And I know that there were two, at the last hearing there were two abutters that came. The one gentle lady who owned 50% of the length of Andover Road, and then the other 50% was split almost down the middle. And there was one property owner who didn't attend and didn't really offer any opinions on anything, so one of the things I raised at the last meeting was that if we don't hear from her one way or another, it's tough to approve this because she'll be inheriting some property here, and I don't know what to make of her silence. So, have you any experience with dealing with that?
Well, that's actually covered by statute under the Board of Public Works hearing, and the opposition, so to speak, anyone who objects goes to the Board of Public Works hearing and they can object. The remedy is, there's another hearing of the Board of Public Works. That did not occur. No one, you know, there was notice to, as I said, to all of the abutters. That notice went out August 7th. The hearing was held August 21st. Board of Public Works wrote their report September 11th, and this has now been before you for a couple of hearings, so I don't think that, I think that's a non-issue at this point.
Yeah, I'm not worried about her opposition. I mean, she's had plenty of opportunity to make herself heard if she was opposed. What I'm worried about is potential cost associated with this.
Note, one of the findings of Board of Public Works was there's no damages to anyone.
So, who will be responsible for procuring the Mylar and recording it in the registry of deeds?
That's, conditions are here. By law, we record them, but the actual production of the MyLars are done by the petitioner.
I see.
And those are conditions are in here, as well as the condition for an A and R.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Does anyone know whether or not we've received correspondence from the Pine Point Neighborhood Council? I know that was one of the concerns at the last meeting. Have we heard from them at all?
Mr. President, I just want to address Counselor Fenton's concern that there has been outreach to the other homeowner and no objection has been raised. We also do have representatives from DPW here if you feel the need to ask them about
So, has anyone heard from the Pine Point Neighborhood Council?
Pardon me?
Have we heard from the Pine Point Neighborhood Council?
I don't believe we have heard from the Pine Point Neighborhood Council, but I don't think it's a necessary requirement for discontinuation of a private way.
It's not a requirement by any statute ordinance.
All the abutters have been notified and have been given an opportunity to express their opinion.
Counselor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just echo Counselor Walsh's sentiment on that. I know that the Pine Point Community Council had a candidates forum as their last regular meeting, so if that was the opportunity for this to arise, that might have been missed because of that, but I believe that with every resident and abutter on the table and an agreement that this is the plan, that that would not be necessary.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, I will, I would need a motion to accept the conditions provided by the Law Department. Motion made by Counselor Edwards, seconded by Counselor Gomez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All in favor of accepting the petition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Items four through seven are petitions, reports on petitions from the Board of Public Works. Number four is from Comcast for the installation of fiber optic cable on Main Street. Item five and six are from Columbia Gas for the installation of gas services on Green Street and Union Street. Item seven is a petition from EverSource for the installation of conduit on Williams Street.
Is there a recommendation?
The recommendations on all four items are to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the petition, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Is there, with no objection, is there an objection to taking item number 12 out of order for the election warrant? Item number 12, Mr. Clerk.
Item number 12 is an order to issue the election warrant.
Good evening. Gladys Oyola from the Election Office, Election Secretary. I'm here this evening to present the election warrant for this November, which will be taking place November 7th. The polling hours are standard from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and the one thing that has changed, which the council has hopefully received an email about, is a polling location that was affected by the change in the use of the Emerson Hall polling location in Ward 3, Precinct A. We're asking tonight that it be resituated over in the Mason Wright Building, which is about 200 feet from the original polling site, and that is in the high-rise portion, 7 to 8.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Do we have lease agreements? What types of agreements do we have with the polling locations?
That polling location, we do not have a lease agreement with. We don't pay them for the use per se of their space. They gift it to us or they allow us to use the space, and then we pay someone for the setup and breakdown of the location itself.
Is that, for the other private spaces that we use, is that generally the case? Do we have any lease agreements?
We do with, like, the Boys and Girls Club, for example. We have a memorandum of understanding with them. We do pay them rental fees. Not all of them get paid rental fees, but by and large, the bigger ones, like, you know, Springfield Boys and Girls Club, Bay State Place, which is another privately-owned location, we do have separate contracts for each.
Mr. President, obviously, we won't be able to do anything about it this year, but it's a really unfortunate circumstance that the voters of that precinct will be surprised, really, at the end about the change. I know that the Commissioner will do everything in her power to notify people and make sure they're aware, but I think as a city, we ought to consider having stronger agreements in place so that there's a penalty if a landlord backs out at the last moment in this particular circumstance, because it does come at a cost to our democracy.
Counselor Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I agree with the council president. We had 5% turnout last election, which was dismal. I think the worst in the history of this strong Maryland form of government, and she can only do what she has to do. Did you go back and talk to the people at Mason Wright?
Yes. One of the things that we, he actually, the director, Allen, asked us if we could move it off-site completely. Thankfully, with some intervention from the mayor's office and the actual seniors at the site, we were able to convince him to allow us to use another space on the same campus because he was, you know, asking us to move off-site completely, and we said that would be problematic for us because a lot of the seniors that used that polling location, the turnout in the last election was very dismal, as you stated, especially in that precinct. We had about 50 voters that turned out. Most of the voters that turned out were situated right on the Mason Wright campus, and if we moved it off of that site, then they would have to find a way to get to another polling location, and thankfully, he allowed us to use the same, it's honestly, it's feet away from each other. If you walk down a different walkway, you're there, and going forward, he's said he would allow us to use that same space in the future elections.
But I'm just very disappointed with the leadership at Mason Wright, because when Mason Wright came to this body, that was the old Rialto skating rink, and this city council gave him a special permit and a zone change with the understanding that he would be community-friendly. That's, and I talked to the mayor the other day concerning that. We thought he had a situation. He wants to throw the elderly out, then he wants to throw the elections out. After he got what he wanted, which was many, many years ago, that's what I'm mostly highly upset at, is that it's just, this is going to, I don't know what it was, 50 voters, was that, 2%, 1%? I don't know what it is, but I'm going to tell you, you move voting places, I don't care, it could be in East Forest Park, it's the same result. People are creatures of habit. They barely want to go vote, and if you make it more difficult for them to go, they just don't vote. I know you can only do what you want to do, but I'm going to tell you, I'm not optimistic of the turnout. I'm, this is three weeks from the election, tomorrow, I believe, three weeks from tomorrow. By the time you notice it's two weeks. I don't know what you do, I guess, nothing.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Twigs.
Mr. President, I rise to, first of all, acknowledge that the Election Commission has a very short staff compared to when I first started working with them. I remember a couple of dozen people in there and probably got a half a dozen people in there now. The question for us is, we know that we're having problems with Mason Wright, but are they moving from one building to another building or is it located in the same building?
It's moving from, are you familiar with the Emerson Hall?
Yes.
Okay, and so it's moving to Mason Wright itself, so the high-rise? There is a first-floor activity room that's located in that building, and they're allowing us use of that space.
Now, what was the question with regards to the Mason Square senior citizen that were there, that are moving in there?
They're going to be moving to, I don't know where.
Another location?
Another location. They're waiting for the use of the Raymond Jordan Senior Center, but as far as the voting goes?
Is that affecting us?
Those are you guys' votes.
I think what you're referring to, Counselor Twigs, there are two separate issues, but they're basically being affected by the same move and the same space issue. We were notified probably around the same time that those seniors were notified, and it was either negotiate a space in the same general vicinity or be located completely off of site, and this was the best of a bad situation that we tried to kind of arrange. We're doing a direct mailing to all of the 1,660 households that are affected, and we've created in Spanish and English with pictures to try to be kind of as detailed as possible, and hopefully, with your approval, then we'll be sending out a press release tomorrow. I mean, it's not a good situation. I'm not going to sugarcoat it at all. We don't, and as you know, we try, our office tries not to bring any changes in polling locations. That's why we've veered away from getting these privately-held locations. We usually have most of our polling locations in schools or city-owned buildings for this reason.
For nonprofits.
Exactly, and, you know, there are some certain places where we have kind of fought the battle to stay, even if it is a Swedingo-owned building, because we know that any change to any polling place affects the voters and affects the voter turnout.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes, I was just following up on the concern of my colleagues about how are you going to notify the people that usually vote there?
There's mailing that's going to go out, so it's a direct mail. We have to send it first class because it's to each individual household, and it's just going to go via U.S. mail.
Okay, thank you.
You're also doing robo-calling, right?
Yes. Can add that to the robo calls. That's a good idea.
Counselor Shane.
And I want to thank you for that call, but do you think there's a way, maybe for that precinct or area, they could custom a call? I mean, we could ask or maybe it could ask.
It's something that I can ask.
If that could be done, that might be just another layer of communication that might help. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Maybe Gladys, you can meet with Melvin and neighborhood council folks?
Going forward, if, going forward, there is not going to be allowed use of the former polling location, I think we have to decide if that's an adequate space going forward for Ward 3.
I don't mean, I mean meet with him on this site here in Mason Wright.
Yes.
Of the site, this site, yeah. I want to commend you.
And everybody else that votes there.
Just let me finish my thought and I yield, okay. I just want to commend you, Gladys, for your outreach and doing what you do. What Henry said with a short staff, I want to commend you. This is, like you said, a bad situation. It just is, because I've got phone calls on it once you sent that email out for people in that precinct, in that district, and it's hard enough to get them to vote as it is. Just to move it across the street makes a difference. That's just people, but we want to commend you. It's not your fault and want folks to know that. You had no control over that.
Counselor Edwards.
Unfortunately, this is a culmination of calamity of errors, so to speak. The Election Office and the commissioners have done a wonderful job, the best that they can under these circumstances. Unfortunately, this site is privately-owned, and my colleague is correct, when they came for special permits to tear the Rialto down, they were afforded certain conditions. They have been good neighbors for the most part. The Maple High Sixth Quarter Neighborhood Council runs their meetings from the basement of that facility. I'm fortunate enough to run Keep Springfield Beautiful from that facility. The Springfield Preservation Trust also runs their meetings from that facility, and I believe at one point, there was a Drug-Free Community Program also run there. Unfortunately, part of what has gone on is, has to do with the building of the senior center in Blunt Park, because the city chose to and notified Mason Wright of their intentions some time ago that this would be one of the centers that they would close. that this would be one of the centers that they would close, Mason Wright went about making changes to prepare for the use of this vacant space that once housed the Senior Center. And as a result of that, they're now going to use it for office space. And one of the casualties of that choice is going to be disruption of our election precinct. And probably even more unfortunately is the effect is going to be on the seniors who are used to going to the center, they're comfortable being there, and they're doing their meals there as well. So it's a tragic event in terms of the election, but the seniors who are, where this has been their haven, they're the ones who are most impacted by what's going to happen. The unfortunate thing even further is, is that moving forward, because this is a private entity, we have no sway over Mason Wright. And there are no other available places anywhere even near this center. This is it. I mean, you can move it down, I mean, I think the closest, next closest building to this site would probably be Third Baptist Church. Or, and I think the second close enough, closest.
Mulberry Street, which would be the school.
Yes. Or you're, yeah, Mulberry Street, or you're going into another precinct altogether when you're talking about commerce. So there are not a lot of available sites in this area. So we're hopeful for the continued generosity of Mason Wright because if they choose not to allow us to have access to this activity room, the disruption is even worse than the few hundred feet that is going to, from one building to the other on the same campus. But the Election Commission and her staff have done a wonderful job. This is not something that was under their control. The timing of everything, Helen Colton Harris has done a wonderful job trying to coordinate that with construction on Blunt Park and the announced changes and stuff. This is the ripple effect of that. So we hope that those who are watching and that those who will get notice of the change will still do their democratic duty and show up to vote. So, thank you.
Good job. Thank you, Melvin.
Counsel Gomez.
Yes, just a brief question. I heard you state that the new location is 200 feet away, same location, and they said that we can continuously use that same location that we're gonna use this year, yes?
Yes.
All right. Is there any way, just like you have a MOU with the Cruz Street Boys and Girls Club, we can enter a mutual agreement with this facility so this doesn't happen to us next year?
I think it's important that we do that so that we can also kind of, you know, secure a certain, if there is to be a move, if they have to do it for whatever reason, that they give us a longer period of time, this is just too last minute. So I do agree with that, and I'll be speaking to Attorney Bakula about hoping that.
Fantastic. I think any other site that we have that we use that is privately, we should enter into a MOU so this doesn't happen in the near future. Thank you so much, and I appreciate it. Gladys Yoda.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, roll call is required. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the election warrant, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Absent.
Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient. Election warrant is approved.
And before we move on to the next item, I'll be passing out the election warrant. All the counselors present could sign their name down here at the bottom. It continues on to the next page.
Back to our regular agenda. Item number eight, Mr. Clerk.
Item number eight is a TJO license plate grant in the amount of $10,000.
All in favor of accepting the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number nine is a hearing on a special permit for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use at the property known as 1835 Boston Road.
All right, this is a public hearing for a special permit. Petitioner will be given 20 minutes to present along with the proponents of the petition. Then the opponents will be given 20 minutes to rebuttal. After that, each side will have five minutes to speak. And then upon completion of the public hearing, I will allow for final questions before I close the hearing from the council. I will then close the public hearing, allow for final comments, amendments, motions, and then we will take a vote. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Delaney. I'm a project manager with Fuss and O'Neill Consulting Engineers, and we're located at 78 Interstate Drive in West Springfield. And I'm here on behalf of the Friendly's Manufacturing Plant. Also here with me tonight are Dave Pasquini and Ken Salio from the plant, in case we have questions specifically relating to any of the operations there. So as I said, I'm here representing Friendly's Manufacturing on their petition for a special permit for the continuation of a non-conforming use. The project consists of the reconstruction of the existing wastewater treatment facility that supports the plant right there on Boston Road. So currently, there's an existing wastewater treatment plant that serves the plant, and that's at least 40 years old and is in dire need of repair. And the proposed project is to construct a new wastewater treatment facility directly adjacent to it. And that's what we're here for tonight. And I'll explain that in the plan a little bit before we get too far. So, as I said, is it okay to step out in front here?
As long as you speak into the microphones so that people at home can hear you.
All right. I'll just do this just to get you oriented. I believe this should all be in your packets, but just to get a visual orientation on this plan, Boston Road goes diagonally across the top of the plan. Kent Road is right here. This is the entrance, or the side entrance into the plant. The Wilbraham Springfield Line goes directly through this area, so it's right on the edge of the city. The existing plant is shown in white here. It's this rectangle. It's a small building with several tanks and outdoor equipment just to the south of it. To the south of this whole area is Westwood Drive with several homes on this east side of Kent Road. And up here, right on the corner, is the Friendly's Restaurant that probably many of you are most familiar with in that area. So the area of the proposed plant is directly to the north of the existing plant. Obviously, the facility is making, stand back here, is continually making ice cream. And in order to maintain a working facility, we have to build the new plant directly, or as close as we can to the old plant. But we can't take the old plant offline until the new plant is completed. So the plan, as shown and as submitted to you folks, was to construct the new wastewater treatment facility directly adjacent into the north of the existing facility, similar size and scope, but built to new standards. Currently, there's several issues in terms of the condition of the plant, the, some mass DEP orders for upgrades to the plant that need to be done, that have been kind of neglected over the years. So this will bring the plant up to very, you know, new, modern-day standards. And we had submitted this to staff, and after their review, one of their main concerns, and one of the, really, one of the only concerns brought up by staff, was to make sure that the plant was properly screened from the adjacent properties. Right now, there's some existing trees, large trees and vegetation to the south, towards Westwood Drive. There is some existing trees and arborvitine vegetation towards the Boston Road side and the Friendly's Restaurant side. And after talking with staff, we added a number of trees in this location that are shown on your plans, and then additional screening all along here. So it effectively will screen our new facility from Boston Road and Kent Road, and then any view of the facility from the neighborhood will be screened by the trees, which kind of closed the gap from these two existing groups of trees. So effectively, it would isolate that facility from direct view from the surrounding areas. So as I said, this is a very important project for Friendly's Manufacturing. It's an upgrade that needs to happen, and it represents a very significant investment by Friendly's and their owner, Dean Foods LLC. It's meant to increase or extend the longevity of the plant for another 30 or 40 years. It's a major investment. It's something that we hope to start essentially immediately upon decision by the council. We have received, as of today, a letter of approval from the city's engineering department on their technical review of the site plan. That was received September 13, 2017. You have in your packets the zoning analysis prepared by the planning department. And then we recently, last week, on October 11, met with the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, requesting their support, and they issued today, they voted at their meeting and then issued a formal letter today also supporting the project. That's the project in a nutshell. I can be happy to answer any questions. David's here and Ken's here to answer questions. So I think it'd be best to open up to any questions.
Before we get to questions, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Please step forward. Say again, if there's anyone else who would like to speak in favor, please step forward. Seeing none? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Seeing none? Are there any questions from the council? Counsel Williams.
Mr. President, just a comment, and I want to thank the ownership of Friendly's. I wish you guys would stand up, come on over.
Yeah, I didn't mean to.
First of all, for staying in Springfield, because I know that a few years ago, there was some talk about Friendly's leaving Springfield. And this project is just as important as MGM, CIRC, Union Station. You're the anchor way up east. And for the jobs that you protect, the city, the governor's been out there, lieutenant governor's been out there, you're doing an amazing job. Thank you for staying in the city and continuing to believe in Springfield. That was not always the case, but you made a commitment to this city, and I want to appreciate it. And based upon the testimony of your consultant, he said at least another 30, 40 years, you're gonna expand the life of that building, which is great news. It's great news for, Mr. President, your Indian Orchard, you're an anchor. Hopefully, with this going, you investing there, that we do something over where Eastfield Mall is. Hopefully, when you're there, Eastfield Mall, we can kind of buff up that end of town, which is great. Boston Road looks great. So thank you for your commitment to the city, and thanks for staying in the city of Springfield. Really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Before I close the public hearing, Counsel Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the applicant, the plans that I see, are there, what will you do with the existing treatment facility? Doesn't show that it's being demolished or anything to that effect.
So the building itself is gonna remain, basically, it's gonna be, outside, there's several tanks and equipment to the south of the building, those white circles that are there, those will all be demolished and removed. And then the new, the existing building that's there will remain and be used to store the supplies and the equipment needed that will feed the new building. So there's process, you know, chemicals and things like that that go into the process of treating the wastewater. That will be, it'll be basically a storage building. It'll be completely gutted in terms of its function as a wastewater treatment building, but it will be, it will remain intact and used to store that equipment. So there will be nothing outside to the south of that building.
And it looks like you're gonna build, is it three storage tanks? A sledge-holding tank, an EQ tank, and a?
Yeah, the odor.
Gas odor tank. So three?
Yeah, the odor, so the equalization tank and the sledge tank are larger, are actual larger tanks. The odor control is a little bit smaller. It's just around the corner. That's carbon, activated carbon, and that's partially in the ground, so it's not a full height tank, but it is.
I can't really tell.
Probably smalls.
Thanks. I can't really tell from the dimensions on the, I guess, zoning drawings that you've submitted, but how tall is that highest tank?
So the highest tank is about 25 to 26 feet tall.
25 to 26.
The building, the existing building's about 20 feet tall, and the proposed building will be about 16 feet tall at its peak. It's 11 and 1/2 feet, I believe, to the soffit. And the equalization tank is smaller, and that's gonna be about, I want to say about 18 feet tall.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going off memory, I apologize, but.
And you said, and the friendly, the real estate that the Friendly's is on is owned by a different entity, but is that a related entity to Dean Food Group, or is that under the same control somehow?
That's a good.
It's a real estate holding company. We're actually leasing that property from them.
Leasing from the real estate holding company, okay. Well, I mean, obviously, I agree with Counsel Williams about Friendly's commitment to the area and need to preserve. I just want to make sure that my colleagues understand before we vote on this that it's gonna be very visible, not just, I think, from Boston Road, based on that height, but also on this little cul-de-sac here from Kent Road. And I know we have some homes act there. One, which just by coincidence, I'm happening to notice, thanks to this new technology from the city clerk, is owned by a TL Bretta Realty LLC, and they're up next on an application for another property. The house right behind is assessed at over, just about $270,000. So it's a new subdivision back there. And as long as the neighborhood council's okay with it, I don't have any objections. I just, they are big tanks, and they will be, they will be visible from that site. It's gonna be on the Boston Road section of that site.
Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. So if I could just visualize driving past Eastfield Mall and come up upon the existing Friendly's Restaurant that is there. This would be after you go past the front of the restaurant, look to the right where there's a parking lot now?
Correct.
And at the back of that parking lot, would this would be visible? Is that kind of what I'm, what you're saying?
Yeah, that's generally correct, yes.
Excuse me?
That's generally correct. As you go past the restaurant building, to the rear, to the right rear is where this will be located.
And is the current wastewater treatment plant that you're replacing, is that visible?
Yes.
It is? So this is in the same general area?
It's directly adjacent to it. The two buildings are about 10 or 12 feet apart, the proposed building and what's there now.
And what would be the facade of the building? Will it be sheet metal, or will it be red brick, or will it be, does it look like the rest of Friendly's, or does it look like a?
I believe, right now, it's a metal frame building. It'll be, I think in the plan show it right now is a gray.
A gray metal building?
Metal building, correct.
Okay. And did you go to the neighborhood council? Did this go?
Yes, we went on the 11th, last week ago, Wednesday.
Was this Indian Orchard?
Indian Orchard, yes.
Indian Orchard. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Before I close the public hearing, are there any final questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Are there any final comments, motions, and/or amendments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the special permit, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes. More than sufficient. Special permit is approved. Under the conditions.
The specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision as the basis of finding.
All in favor of accepting the reason, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 10 is a hearing on a zone change for 391 Hancock Street from Residence B to
Is there anyone here for 391 Hancock? Go.
391 Hancock? I'm just here as a planning board reporter. Sorry. Thank you.
I lost on me.
I'm lost on me. Hey, I'm turning on my phone.
Second.
So this item, this is my fault, this item is on for first reading before the council. It's automatically going to the planning board for, I think it's October 23rd. So it's for reading and referral to the planning board. There's no action required by the council. The next item that's on for a hearing is a zone change for the property at South Side Verge Street. This property is changing from residence A to residence B.
Is there anyone here for zone change for Verge Street and Laconia Street? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Tom Breda at 32 Eastwood Drive, Wilbraham, Mass. I was here for a zone change for property I bought at 190 Laconia Street. I purchased four building lots with the property. I sold the property after the purchase of 190 Laconia Street, kept the land and was looking to do a zone change from residence A to residence B. Originally, the property was industrial zoned, industrial A, I believe, and I was looking to build four duplexes on the four building lots, on the four parcels over there.
Is there anything else you would like to add?
I've been building in the city for 30-plus years, the land development, and I own several rental properties in the area and I just see there's a huge demand for nice rental properties in the area. And I own other duplexes over there on the street, on Laconia Street, and I don't see that single families really fit in with the industrial zone and the rental properties that are on the street. And I think there's a high need for nice rental properties over there in that area.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this zone change? Please step forward. State your name and address for the record.
Linda Yarber, 961 Worcester Street, Indian Orchard, Mass. As a resident who is on the Economic and Development Committee of the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, I attended the public meeting regarding the zone change request made by Mr. Breda so that he can build the duplexes on the property. There was no one present that spoke against the request being granted. I had the opportunity to talk with tenants of other properties that Mr. Breda owns and rents out. They spoke very highly of him as the landlord. I also had the opportunity to see many of his other properties. I, as someone who has been a renter for all my life, can appreciate a landlord that builds the quality of rental properties that he does and sees that the maintenance is always kept up. Nobody had to complain about calling five times to get their toilet fixed. He's always on the money and takes care of the property. I am asking that you grant Mr. Breda's request for a zone change so that he can build more quality homes that people can call home and raise their families in.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Please step forward. Are there any questions from the council? Counsel Allen.
I have a question for Phil, please.
Yeah, a couple of questions, Phil. When you, when you have a request like this before you, what are the predominant things you look at? The mix of residence A and residence B? This was currently, this was industrial before and it's going? Could you just talk?
Well, this is kind of an odd duck. I mean, the majority of the neighborhood is industrial A, even though there's residential housing. Under our, under our previous versions of the zoning ordinance, you were allowed to build housing within residential, within industrial A zones, assuming they were laid out for residential development. You couldn't go into a purely industrial area and create a subdivision, but most of these streets, specifically in Indian Orchard, Laconia, there's a number of streets in Indian Orchard that were laid out for housing developments but were zoned industrial. So as I noted in my report back in 1993, the owner of these properties actually rezoned their properties from industrial A to residence A. Again, I think that was a mix of, they didn't want two-family homes at that time and also the owners owned a number of vacant lots next to them, so if you're zoned industrial A and it's vacant, you're getting taxed the industrial A rate. So by rezoning your property, you can reduce, you would then be rezoned the residential rate. So I think that was another.
So your taxes would go down?
Your taxes would go down. If it was, if it was all combined into one, it wouldn't, but because these were vacant lots and buildable lots, they were taxed, being taxed at the industrial rate. So Mr. Breda has now purchased those lots and is requesting to rezone them from residence A, which is single family, to residence B, which is two-family. When we look at the land use issues, one of the, one of the prime things I look at is what's the predominant land use of that area? And although it's the majority of it's zoned industrial A and there's a mix of businesses, the predominant land use over there is two-family housing. You know, you find that both on Laconia Street and on Verge Street. So we don't believe, we don't believe that it's, let me take that back, we believe that zone change is an appropriate land use for that particular area.
Thank you. And this request is just for the property that he owns?
Correct. It's just for four specific lots. I think there's gonna be a number, a couple other ones that have not sold yet that'll still remain residential A, but, but these particular four lots would be rezoned to residence B, which would allow two-family houses.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Before I close the public hearing, are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none. Any final comments, motions, and/or amendments? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
On approving the zone change, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Marcus Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Twigs.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Shay.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
No.
No, Counsel Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Bud Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes, more than sufficient, zone change is approved. Is there any further business before the council?
I have no further business before the council.
Our next meeting is October 23rd, hearings meeting. Thank you.